We're gonna do um part two of what it means to have an organisation. But before we do anything, yes, Big Kez, before we do anything, um let me just do my disclaimer. So this is not an SGI meeting and Johnny Gilbert, the author, has not asked me to do this. Like, he knows that we're doing it. He's super proud, super happy. That being said, let's just jump straight into prayer. Let's just uh and into chanting, just for about five minutes. So yeah, let's do this. Let me get my bell. I've also worked out that I reckon we've got a month left, four more sessions. And then we can say we've literally studied like an intense book together, which is mad. And I'm taking a break so I can get my Wednesdays back, I'm not gonna lie, for a minute, and then we'll start something else. It's good for me, though, for my mental health and to keep me in rhythm, because all the centres are closed right now and many people there practise and their Buddhism is like becoming flat. And actually, this is the time to prove that you're really a Buddhist, when the world is burning and you need to be that light man. So this is an opportunity for me to just maintain my own spiritual strength. But that being said, let's chant for five minutes. Thank you. I'm charged up. So um today's a very auspicious, beautiful and amazing day for Buddhists, so it's an honour that I'm doing this with you today. It's seven hundred and thirty-nine years since Nichin Daishenen died on the thirteenth of October in the thirteenth century. And it's sixty years today since the president of the Sokogakai International first visited the UK. And I can only assume that all of us on this call are in the UK, so very auspicious day. Um this is our monthly magazine, um and this is an image of um Sensei and his wife, just so you can get his vibe. His Sensei just means great teacher, you know, don't think that I'm out here like following a cult. It's very powerful. I'm gonna just quickly read the little subheadings, what we're gonna do today, and then we'll start, if that's okay. Also, let me just add, I'm gonna add something in the chat right now. There is also, after this, because it is such a special day for us, an actual SGI meeting that I'm allowed to invite you to, if you wanted to come. It's from eight till nine, just if you want to. It might be um, you might find it beneficial. But I've just put the password and the um the meeting ID in the chat, so it's there if you wanna join. I'll be there for sure. Praising my life and the effort of all the people in the UK for the last sixty years. So today we're gonna be doing part two of like what it means to be part of an organisation. And this is the part where often people um, you know, when they can get pushed away a little bit when you start talking about organisations or like religion. Like, you know, it's all good just chanting Nammyo Haringe Kyo for the new Range Rover, but like when you when you take it to that next level, people can start getting a bit nervous. So I really wanted to just put some energy on that, you know. Um so yeah, I'm gonna just read this. So part two, our collective conditioning. How are we conditioned? Suspicion of religion, new atheism. And we're gonna talk a bit about um uh Dawkins there, if you know about The God Delusion. Um kind of a famous guy that made that book. I think his name was uh Richard Dawkins, if I'm right. The next section, we're gonna be talking about, we all have belief systems. Then, what is a cult? Brainwashing, an experience of heart-to-heart bonds across the world, research on the benefit of religions. Uh can a secular alternative work a family experience? So um we're gonna do eighteen pages. Um realistically, no, that it's not gonna take me right to eight o'clock. And then hopefully, that's perfect timing, and then I can dash off to my meeting and leave you butter sat for us to do what you need to do. So um I just wanted to start this section by um showing you, this is the book that we use as Buddhists. It's called The Literature of Nichin um Buddhism. And after doing our chants, uh we have three silent prayers. And the third of them says, I pray, this is how it looks in our books. I pray that the great vow for worldwide coast and roofu, which is, you know, world peace, through the individual transformation of every single person's human flame coming on. You know, imagine like the whole sun. It's actually, it's the sun, because every single person is a candle in that sun. That's how I vision it. So yeah, coast and roofu is a transformation of the planet, but through each individual recognising that we are all the microcosm of that. Um so yeah, I pray to the great, I pray that the great vow for worldwide coast and roofu be fulfilled. And that the Sokogakai International, which we're gonna be talking about today, develops in this endeavour for countless generations to come. So that's the first part of the third prayer. I pray that the great vow for worldwide coast and roofu, world peace, be fulfilled. And that the Sokogakai International developing this endeavour for countless generations to come. Um so that's what we ID twice a day. Um and we're gonna jump straight in. And again, always, any questions, anything, just bang it in the box. Um tenth week, I haven't had one question, so you guys are amazing, man. You must be catching on. So let me find out where it is, one sec. Nope, not that one. Here it is. Sorry. Right, cool. Jules, is that good? Can you see it? Okay, cool. Thank you. We're gonna jump straight in, so eighteen pages, let's do it. Part two, our collective conditioning. As we have seen, research points to the physical, social and emotional benefits of being part of a group. In having high-quality interactions, a sense of belonging and a greater meaning of life. All traits which religion is perfectly placed to offer and the SGI as an open, non-exclusivist and socially engaged model, a good place to start. And yet, we have also noted societal trends towards greater isolation, distrust of organisations in general, and particularly particular suspicion of religion per se. Where does this come from and can it all be challenged? How are we conditioned? We are conditioned life forms. The conditioning process is a part of every human society. It includes the values of a society, what a society believes about itself and others, acceptable behavioural codes and what we should aspire to achieve to create a good life. For pretty much everyone, this conditioning, starting in childhood and continuing throughout our lives, is something we are barely aware is happening. Conditioning is not inherently a bad thing, and in fact, it is a prerequisite for a functioning human society in terms of expected behaviours and communication. However, the subconscious belief that derives from our everyday conditioning can lead us to assumptions that we are always right and that others see things the same as ourselves. Without full reflection on the merits of our viewpoint. Matthew uh Lieberman, a psychologist of the University of California, showed through brain imaging how people's beliefs categorise human beings in general and racial groups unconsciously as good or bad. And that because the responses were irrespective of the participant's own race, this was most likely learned from the prevailing cultural conditioning. The neuroscientist Kathleen Taylor of Oxford University considers beliefs and ideas the most important currency for modern humans now that our physical needs are met. Beliefs arising from our conditioning significantly affect our decision-making process. And yet, in a society that rejects the coordinated conscious framework of belief which religions offer, belief becomes more subconscious, less explicit. And I would suggest more easily manipulated by external drivers. Manipulation of belief happens all the time. Fake news and online conspiracy theories have magnified this process in susceptible individuals. But the media and our social groups can have this influence on our collective belief. For example, Taylor has noted that in the wake of the nine eleven terror attacks and the invasion of Iraq, more than half of Americans believed Iraqis were involved in the nine eleven attacks. Despite no explicit evidence in this regard, or this being directly suggested by politicians. It is only when we gain awareness that we have internalised ideas from family, community and society, that we can then make our own choices in terms of our beliefs. And I'll talk about this with you guys all the time. How much is it like Boris Johnson's ideas, or your brothers, or your sisters, or your mothers, or your aunties, or your cultures? Like, it's so hard nowadays to actually have that brain-to-heart coherence and realise it's actually my belief, even if it feels wrong, because everyone else is going in different directions. So yeah, it is only when we gain awareness that we have internalised ideas from family, community and society, that we can take then, uh that we can then make our own choices in terms of our beliefs. Yet also, fear of change, and this is super important as well, you know, I've seen so many people that have so much potential and they're unhappy and they know the route to become happy. But they're stuck in their mundane fear-based energy and actually they'd rather stay there than the unknown, which is gonna come. So he'll say it better than me. Yet also, fear of change can be an important factor in holding on to an ingrained belief system. And rejecting personal change or engagement with a new set of beliefs or outlook. Researchers Faraz and Wilcom describe this well-documented tendency. Thus, even if you're unhappy, you know where you are. The prospect of change brings uncertainty. What will happen? Who will I become? For many people, the unknown is unsettling, much more so than a familiar feeling of unhappiness. Perversely, there may be a sense of comfort within long-term enduring discomfort. Um and I know that sometimes, sometimes I'll be in this room for so long and like a beautiful opportunity comes and like my lower life state is like, no, I don't wanna go, I'd rather stay here, like it's all long. And then, but when you push yourself and you just go to the unknown, it's absolutely glorious and amazing and special. But it's, you know, in my own life, I've seen that tendency to just wanna remain in the slum, remain in the poverty state, remain, remain, you know, because it's like, I don't know. I don't know if I can make a thousand pound on pine needles. That sounds all crazy. You know what I mean? Like, you don't wanna make them moves. By the way, my target's ten thousand pounds for the pine needles. I reckon I'm gonna make that. So anyway. Especially with a new book I've got. Anyway, I would suggest, this is why many, though not all, would feel more comfortable paying for a yoga class with limited interaction with the other participants. Than to join their first discussion meeting, filled with the opportunity for new interactions and costing nothing. The yoga class subscribes to the market-driven model of paying for a service. Although there are practitioners and organisations promoting yoga very much rooted in spirituality and a set of principles, the average class in the West does not require participants to reflect on their beliefs and values. For the majority, it is there for relaxation and stress, stress release, which is all good and well in and of itself. On the other hand, a discussion meeting, which is what we're doing now, although I'm the only one discussing. On the other hand, a discussion meeting involves no monetary exchange, but a far greater interaction and connection. The rewards are far greater too, as we have seen from the research, but this can be challenging for those conditioned in an increasingly isolated society. Suspicion of religion, the new atheism. The decline in engagement in religion, the rise in distrust in general terms and the rejection of organisation can all be seen in the context of a collective shift in the beliefs of the West. Shifts may seem like an organic process, but they are driven by events and ideas promulgated by the media, leading thinkers and political leaders. Suspicion of religion may have also grown due to media coverage of controversies within established Christian denominations and contradictions to traditional teachings, highlighted by scientific advancement. One particular view of organised religions as being a particularly nefarious and manipulative set of beliefs is propagated by the new atheists. Led by the four horsemen of new atheism, Hitchens, Harris, Dennett and Dawkins. Most influential of these is Richard Dawkins, whose world bestseller from two thousand and six, The God Delusion, has undoubtedly contributed to the growing atheism in Western society. As a Nichin Buddhist, one can read The God Delusion and find much of it relevant, inspiring and in agreement with Nichin's admonition that Buddhism is reason. Dawkins at the outset clarifies that his focus is on a supernatural god or gods most familiar in the Old Testament, not an impersonal law-like god such as perceived by Einstein. In fact, he explicitly states, I shall not be concerned at all with other religions such as Buddhism or Confucianism. Indeed, there is something to be said for treating these not as religions at all, but as ethical systems or philosophies of life. Dawkins' invective is directed at the claims and narrative of traditional Christianity in the main part. Certainly, you can often find in SGI UK meetings members who prefer not to call SGI Buddhism a religion at all. I much prefer the term philosophy, which I prefer personally, philosophy, just because my generation, religion is just not gonna, like, it's not gonna work. I am comfortable with using the term religion in relation to SGI, as it confers a system of organisation, faith and community, which does not necessarily require the worship of a deity. And covers the many facets of SGI practice far more than the term philosophy, though I respect those who prefer otherwise. Thank you, Johnny. Appreciate that. One area on which I find myself in agreement with Dawkins is on the labelling of children as being of a particular religion and the segregation of schools based on religion. Small children are too young to decide their views on the origins of the cosmos, of life and of morals, he writes. I do, in contrast to Dawkins, find it perfectly reasonable for parents to share their spiritual and moral convictions with their children. In fact, as we have seen, this process will take place whether it is conscious or not. However, once a child has become an adult, who can weigh up the evidence and make the choice for themselves, then it is up to them to make, uh to choose to practise any particular religion or not. SGI UK has a well-developed programme of activities for young people, which aim to provide connections, community and inspiration. But it is not possible to become a member of SGI UK before the age of sixteen, and there are no childhood ceremonies such as a baptism to initiate the unknown child into the faith. SGI is very much in accord with Dawkins' perspective on establishing the free choice of the adult in terms of faith, even for those brought up in religion. Dawkins explains the wonders of life on earth effectively through the evolutionary process of natural selection, without the need for creation myths or miracles. But he does acknowledge there is no similar satisfactory explanation for the wonders of the universe and the perfect balance of the laws and building blocks of physics. This is the Achilles' heel in the materialistic scientific belief system, which we examined more in detail in chapter three. On this point, on this next point, I wish to beg to differ with Dawkins. For him, human conditioning is victim to a malicious design programme, the self-replicating false beliefs of religions, memes. Which spread like mind viruses from generation to generation. This perspective, clumsy in my view, lumps all religion beliefs as inherently negative. Dawkins claims that our moral progress in the past century is a natural development of the moral zeitgeist outside of religious belief. But fails to recognise the spiritual conviction of some of the key leaders of twentieth century, who had a profound influence on political and social structures, as well as providing moral leadership. Gandhi and Martin Luther King being the two most obvious examples of this. The new atheist expels expose a somewhat fundamentalist position while attacking, and in many cases, quite rightly so, fundamentalism in religion. Dawkins claims he would abandon his position overnight if the evidence appears to disprove it. As all good scientists should. In contrast, Steve Taylor and Rupert Sheldrake both argue that the materialistic, the materialist and in tandem atheist perspective is based on assumptions. Not proven fact on the nature of consciousness, matter, brain, etc. It is a meme and a belief system like any other. The new atheist position goes further than just attacking extreme and fundamentalist religions. It sees more balanced and reasonable religions as leaving the gate of a jar, fundamentalist religions to enter and cause havoc. This creates suspicions surrounding all religious practice and I believe is a contributor to society's current fear and rejection of all organised religions. I challenge this argument. It is like stating that all people should reject watching football, because there is a committed group of hooligans in many countries' fanbase. What really is the problem are the claws of hatred, division and anger within the human heart. Atheists are often prone to cite the wars that have been fought in the name of religion. But Stalin and Pol Pot, both avowed atheists, killed more people than any religious war in the twentieth century. I avoid mentioning Hitler, as he seemed to flip between Catholicism and atheism in his speeches. We all have belief systems. Again, we return to Nichin. Belief systems are within us, whether we like it or not, whether we are conscious of them or not, whether they are religious or not. But surely, the defining value of a belief system should not be whether or not it is religious, but whether it can successfully promote respect, harmony and a peaceful world. Is it not better to consciously choose a belief system on a logical and rational basis that creates value, wellbeing and peace? Rather than be unconsciously swept away by the social zeitgeist? Dawkins offers science as a source of meaning to replace religion. But I would suggest that this is insufficient when it comes to value, morality and decision-making, as evidenced by the distortion of morality and science creation of the nuclear weapons. Furthermore, science's limited understanding of consciousness and mind leaves a gaping hole in what it can currently offer humanity in terms of wisdom. This is not to reject science and its values to us all, but not to elevate it to replace religion wholesale. Faith, a word that is an anathema to atheists, need not be blind faith, unquestioned faith. In the case of SGI, it can be based on empirical evidence and three proofs, as Nichin outlined. This book aims to contribute to that process. Blind faith, on the other hand, asserts itself not only in manipulative religions, but in every human being who takes their belief system and social values as a given. Consciously choosing a belief system and/or a religion actually empowers the individual to make positive selective change for themselves, those around them and the world as a whole. I highlighted that part there because it really resonated just with me. I think I was the first person that I knew out of any of my friends or any of my family members that actually, you know, like actively chose a religion or a philosophy and started following it. Like, all of my other friends, like, they might be Islamic, you know, um or Christian, um or Hindu. But the parents were Hindu, Christian or Muslim, and they were born into it, you know. At max, and to be honest, I know a lot of guys that had gone to prison and they come out Islamic, they come out Muslim. But you know, that's like quite extreme cases of, you know, being stuck in a room for five years. Um so yeah, I was the very first person I ever knew personally that actually actively chose to take on a religion, practising a philosophy. And I just had to highlight it because them words speak my truth. So consciously choosing a belief system and/or a religion actually empowers the individual to make a positive selective change for themselves, those around them and the world as a whole. Instead of me just like passively following the zeitgeist, as he says, like just following what my family are praying to or something. You know, so many times I have friends that are Islamic, for instance, and I love that. And I say to them, like, you pray obviously five times a day, right? You follow the rules of Islam. And they say to me, oh, and you know, I'm having sex right now with this girl and I'm smoking spliffs. And I kinda say to them, well, first of all, my religion says I can do that, so, but your religion says you can't. So I'm kind of like, I'm interested that, like, you're just like, to me, you didn't choose to be Islamic, innit? You're just born Islamic. I'm only using Islam as an example and, you know, um and I think that's because they've been born into it, that they don't, they don't, they're not studying it. They don't feel the honour of actually being a disciple of that religion or a member of that religion or a person of that faith. And so it just becomes mundane and it, you know, like, I chose this. So if I choose to go against the teachings that are empowering me, then it's all on me. It's not like because my parents are forcing this on me and so I can kind of like, you know, wanna break away and stuff. Like, this is my choice for my life. So um and it really has made, you know, an empowering change on me and pretty much anyone I've ever met as well, because, you know, you're just vibrating higher and higher and higher. And that was my choice. So what is a cult? This is an interesting part. Um because if you're at SGI online, there's definitely some people that will be like, oh my god, that's a cult, you know, Sensei, he's a cult leader. There's a lot, anything you ever do online, when there's someone benevolent, you know, I remember when I was into Hinduism and I started going to meet Sri Swami Vishwanda, who's the leader of Bhakti Marga. I don't know if anyone's seen a photo of me, it's like this Asian guy, beautiful Asian guy with his hand on my head. Um but when I started going to there, um I started thinking to myself, uh well, first of all, all these people are like, you know, they're fully, they're just like, they're, they're. They see him as more powerful than than um themselves. And when I started to get really close to him and I had Darshan with him a few times, I thought, let me like find out about him online. So I just, I went on like Google like forums and I was horrified. People are saying that he was sleeping with all the male, all the male attendants and stuff. And anyway, I knew a lot of people that were his male attendants. So I said to him, like, what is all this stuff online? And they just said, do you believe it? And I said, to be honest, I don't think I believe it. And they said, oh, you've passed the first test. And it's like that with anyone, you're like, anyone that's really incredible and profound, there's a whole lot of shit online about them, like people that are unhappy, people in lower life states reflecting their shit on them. Um so it's important, I'm so happy that Johnny has covered this, what is a cult? Um just to make sure, because as well, when you're like some six-foot-three mixed-race guy from South London, all your brothers are like just gang members or something or just, you know, like. And then suddenly I'm chanting something in another language, it can be scary. Me and Chris, we was only recently somewhere and we was both doing gongyo. And the cleaner of this, the cleaner of this place where we was, um asked, like, are you Satanists? Or like, is that something demonic going on in there? And so it made me really realise, you know, we have to have like, you know, I am, I'm a Westerner, really strictly practising in Eastern philosophy. And there's so many people, unfortunately, just have tired mind states, they don't have the respect just to ask. So instead, they just go straight to something dark with it. So it's the same, I'm sure, with Reiki or it's the same with yoga. There's people that'd be like, oh my god, it's witchcraft, it's witchcraft, like, you know, they don't have any, they don't have no respect to actually fully go into it, you know. So um, uh you're part of a cult. So um anyway, I'm mumbling, let me carry on. What is a cult? Another prevalent factor in society's conditioned response to involvement in religious organisations is the concept of cults. The idea of a cult and fear of cults is part of our collective conditioning in the West, but derives from the relatively recently anti-cult movement of the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties. Although references to cults will appear from time to time in the media, considered academic research across the world has questioned the very concept of a cult. I will therefore use the term new religious movement when not specifically referencing the idea of a cult. The anti-cult movement was begun in the nineteen seventies by parents of young people of the hippie generation, who had joined new religious movements such as the Hare Krishnas and the Moonies, the Unification Church. Researchers suggest the majority of parents were tolerant of their children's life choices, but a small percentage found the rejection of an expected career path. And the devotion of time, energy and finances required in being part of one of these groups is intolerable. The anti-cult movement was bolstered with literature from previous decades by Christian writers who were threatened by new religions and had coined the term cult. In November nineteen seventy-eight, a US congressman and his entourage, along with nine hundred followers of a socialist Christian church commune named the People's Temple, died in combined acts of murder and suicide. The unequivocal horror of the Jonestown massacre, as it became known, made nineteen seventy-nine a bumper year for media attacks on all religious movements. Unfairly lumping together in the term cults and the anti-cult movement was emboldened across the world. Professor James Beckford of the University of Warwick considers the media portrayal of all religions to be sensationalists and their treatment of new religious movements particularly unfair. Professor Aileen Baker of the London School of Economics has stated, new religious movements come in a vast variety of forms. They are successful or they fell for a multitude of reasons. Uh facile generalisation are bound to be wrong. Through their studies of new religious movements, social scientists have found that many of the statements in the popular media are blatantly untrue about the majority of the movements. And others refer to only a tiny portion of their number. Carefully considered and checked academic scholarship provides a critical balance against the generalisation and stereotypical images which all too often pass as in-depth journalism. As Professor Beckford described, the media portray of so-called cults. However, it is this emotive media creation of the fear of cults which is embedded in the collective consciousness. And even inspired some European governments to issue reports against wide ranges of religions. For example, the French government issued a report in nineteen ninety-six against a hundred and seventy-two minority religions as dangerous sects. While ignoring the work of French scholars of new religions and the negative reaction of the academic community to the report as an unreasonable attack on the wide spectrum of religions. With very different structures, beliefs and outlooks. In Germany, the anti-cult campaign consisted mainly of officials of the established Christian churches in the country. Ironically, the anti-cult movement behaved in not dissimilar ways to the cults they depicted. Brian Wilson of Oxford University stated, this anti-cult movement generally attributes a single-minded fanaticism. The supreme conviction of their own righteousness, a determination to save individuals from their delusion and indeed thereby save the world. So in a sense, all these anti-cult movements were cults themselves, because they thought they were more supreme. Um so it becomes like a circle. George Kreiside from the University of Wolverhampton, oi oi, Chris. George Kreiside from the University of Wolverhampton considers that the anti-cult movement also provides an outlet for prevalent racism in Britain towards eastern ideas and cultures in general. We also notes that it takes a long time for a dissenting religious body to win any degree of disinterested approval from the general public. The Quakers and the Salvation Army being two examples who have done so far, done so after many decades, even centuries. Brainwashing. At the heart of the idea of cults is the concept of brainwashing, in which physiologically vulnerable individuals are enticed into cults through subtle and overpowering psychological techniques. And which result in the recruit losing his or her ability to think or choose another way. The idea of brainwashing derives from the thought-control practice used by the Chinese against British prisoners during the Korean War. And was being widely used as a term in the anti-cult movement by nineteen seventy-five. The idea has been consistently reinforced in the media as an emotive hook to stories about supposed cults and become part of popular vocabulary and perception. And yet, academics universally and resoundly reject the idea of brainwashing in relation to religious movements. Lilliston and Shepherd of Oakland University, Michigan states that "brainwashing is refuted by both the data on the development of religious organisations and the inadequacy of the pro-offered psychological explanation. There is no research evidence to support the notion of brainwashing as offered by critics." In fact, the collapse of a court case in the US involving evidence by Margaret Singer, a key advocate of the brainwashing hypotheses, discredited her theories and contributed to the collapse of the anti-cult network in America. Proversely, many anti-cult groups also supported the deprogramming of people involved in new religious movements against their will, using some of the techniques which they themselves associated with brainwashing. In contrast to the unsubstantial charge of brainwashing, academic studies of new religion, religious movements have found a general conclusion that good mental health is typical amongst adult members. In addition, the suggestion that new religious movements displays a large number of common characteristics has been debunked by a number of academic writers. As we will see later in this chapter, the health benefits of religious experience can deepen on the theological thrust of the religion. Finally, even if a small minority of religious movements do manifest some traits of a cult, that is deeply unfair to tar all religious movements with this brush. Brian Wilson at Oxford University concluded that S G I does not show the secrecy, authoritarianism, inflexibility and entrenched resistance to change, which popular opinion identifies with a cult. An experience of heart-to-heart bonds across the world. From a naturally suspicious and typically British mind state, I was soon confident in my early days of practice that there was no hidden agenda behind the warmth, friendship and hope-filled conviction of the first S G I members I encountered. This openness and pure-heartedness was encapsulated in an experience I had only a matter of months before I began to practise Nitron Buddhism. My mother and I had decided to take a walking holiday in Nepal in the spring of two thousand and one in celebration of our retirement. I phoned the S G I UK National Centre at Taplow Court to see if I could connect with some members in Kathmandu. As luck would have it, the receptionist volunteering that day had lived in Nepal in the preceding years and gave me the phone number not only of a member, but of the general director of Nepal, S G I, Kashab Sristra. I hope I'm saying that right. On arriving in Nepal's capital, I called Kashab and I was welcomed with warmth to the extent that he invited me and my mother for a Chinese meal to celebrate Nepal New Year with the top leaders of S G I Nepal. This was before I even become an S G I member and receive Gohonzon. I remember being collected in an already packed small Fiat car and driven just a hundred yards to the next tentment where the restaurant was. The next day, we were invited to the main S G I centre in Kathmandu for their New Year's Day celebration meeting, in which they asked me to play a song with the guitar. They were somewhat surprised that I didn't know any of the arousing traditional S G I songs that they also conducted as group sing-alongs that day. The warmth and unfettering regard for us by people from the other side of the world truly touched our hearts. And when I met Mrs. Shrestha at Taplow Court last year, I was overwhelmed with gratitude for the welcome they gave that fledging Buddhist twenty years ago before. My mother, inspired by my own personal transformations and trusting in the S G I members, she had met in the UK and abroad, began chanting a few months afterwards. That's the exact same for me as well. My mom noticed such a transformation in my spirit and in my happiness and in my friendships. And then the people, I was like hanging around with like seventy-year-old men all the time. And she's like, what's going on with my son? And I was just blowing me away and I was coming back with books and I was, so she very quickly started chanting with me. And you know, my mom's not an S G I member, she would, she's what you would call a naitoku, I guess, which is like, you know, she's new to the practice and she doesn't specifically feel guided to sit there reading the Go Show or study and, but you know, she'll take the, she'll take the benefit though. She'll take the advantage and she'll, she'll run with it and I love that, you know, like it's amazing. And it's such an honour, man, to, you know, to, to see someone you love so much, do something that's so powerful and for you, you know? So I can really resonate with Johnny when he says this. So my mother, inspired by my own personal transformation and trusting in the S G I members, she had met in the UK and abroad, began chanting a few months afterwards. During that meal in Kathmandu, I was sat next to Kashab, a great man who sadly died a few years later. I wrote in my diary of that time, "At one point, he turned to me and gave guidance, which has a profound impact on me." He told me that Buddhism is about helping others, that, that it is the key to our own fulfilment and the wellbeing of the whole planet. Although I had read this before, it was only now that it truly lodged in my heart. Research on the benefits of religion. In contrast to the societal conditioning that could turn us against religion, research is increasingly pointing to the benefits of being involved in a religious group. Researchers at the Mayo Clinic concluded, "Most studies have shown that religious involvement and spirituality are associated with better health outcomes, including greater longevity, coping skills, health-related quality of life, even during terminally illness and less anxiety, depression and suicide." Several studies have shown that addressing the spiritual needs of the patient may enhance recovery from illness. The religious report more happily, more, the religious report more happy, sorry, the religious report more happiness than the non-religious have been found to have lower blood pressure. And in nineteen ninety-nine, a study attending, study attending religious services more than once a week has linked to an additional seven years of life compared to those who never go. The Handbook of Religion and Health in two thousand and twelve reviewed thousands of database studies since the year two thousand and came to the conclusion that religion and spiritual practice conferred a wide range of physical and mental health benefits. In two thousand and ten, study, in a two thousand and ten study, Dr. Andrew Newberg, a neuroscientist at Thomas Jefferson University, Philadelphia, found that meditative prayer, such as prayer, that repeats a particular phrase, as in the case of chanting Daimoku, Namuyohrengekyo, activates areas of the brain involved in regulating emotional responses. Even religion, apart from a contemplative element, may change brain circuits according to Michael Inslich, PhD of the University of Toronto. He analysed a particular brainwave that spikes when people make mistakes and found those with greater religious zeal had a dampened brain spike and calmer responses when making mistakes. And remember, religion here, remember, doesn't mean some crazy church thing. It means, you know, like deep connection to the cosmos, to yourself, you know? So like read it with that kind of mind state right now. However, inconsistent and differing religions are in practice and ritual. On the whole, they promote the conviction that our evidence is purposeful, that our existence is purposeful and that our life worthwhile. You can imagine as well, if you're being told, if you believe and you're embodying a philosophy that's telling you, you are the catalyst of the universe, you are needed, you chose to be here. Like you are valuable, just that alone has, surely without me being a scientist, has to improve our mental health, has to improve our neurology, has to improve the quality of our life, you know, surely. However, inconsistent and different religions are in practice and ritual. On the whole, they promote the conviction that our existence is purposeful and our life worthwhile. Research indicates that the meaning, that the meaning this confers in people's life creates optimism in the religion. Wide-ranging investigations in the field of positive psychology have shown optimists are healthier and of course happier. The social support mechanism of religions can also account for some of the health benefits seen in religious participation. It should however, be fairly noted that research into wellbeing has found intensely religious people have the highest level of life satisfaction. But that strong atheists have quite high level of life satisfaction, higher than the nominal religions, nominally religious. Having strong meaning in one's life seems to be the determining factor here. However, further research has shown that wellbeing very much depends on the religious belief system one subscribes to. Newberg has pointed out that if a religious, a religion advocates hate for non-believers, these negative pattern beliefs and emotions show up in brain patterning. For those filled with guilt, fear or severe religious confliction, religious beliefs can have a negative impact on health and wellbeing. In a study by Pagament et al., two thousand and one, religious patients experienced a nineteen to twenty-eight percent greater mortality rate due to their belief that God was either punishing or abandoning them. And we all know about the power of the mind. So can a secular alternative work? From an atheist perspective, all this evidence may be true, but it doesn't make religion truthful. I hope in the rest of the book, I can outline the clear rationale behind Nitron Buddhist, Nitron Buddhist belief. But mainstream society may more often than not try to acquire the social and sense of meaning benefit conferred by religion through non-religious means. So could the benefit of religion be equally derived from secular alternatives? Alan de Botton, one of the UK's most noted contemporary philosophers, has attempted to do just that in his book Religion for Atheists. He points out that we invented religions to serve two central needs which contribute to this day and which secular society has not been able to solve with any particular skill, namely living together and the overcoming of pain and suffering. He notes that religions merit our attention for their sheer conceptual ambition, for changing the world in a way that few secular institutions ever have. Having sympathically cited religious, successful religious examples, what follows are de Botton's attempts to secular alternatives to all the pillars of religious organisations, community, education, art and values, perspective. Undoubtedly creative and at times humorous, de Botton's suggestions appear wholly unrealistic in terms of actually being implemented in real life. For example, he proposes building temples to reflection and perspective, psychotherapeutic, psychotherapeutic travel agencies, which would align mental disorders with part of the planet best able to alleviate them and advertising hoarding preaching accepted moral values. Finally, he cites Auguste comment, a nineteenth-century philanthropist who, in a parallel to de Botton, attempted to start a non-religious secular religion and failed miserably. And as indeed Richard Dawkins himself has pointed out, organising atheists have been compared to herding cats. De Botton's ideas seem so fanciful because secular society and atheism in particular lead themselves naturally to individualism. No conclusive credible alternative to religion has been offered that could be practically implemented. Far more likely to succeed is not an extraction of the religious model grafted on to rational secular ideas, but a rational religion based on reason and evidence. S G I Buddhism is just such a religion. Count Richard Calargh, Count Richard Calargh, founding father of the European Unification, stated in nineteen seventy in Dasaku Ikida's first dialogue with a leading thinker outside of Japan, "Only a new religious movement can prevent the drift towards a third world war and save humankind." The Sokegakai is thus a tremendous source of hope. The New Human Revolution series of novels powerfully illustrates how this source of hope transformed the direst of situations of individual practitioners. Could a secular alternative have broken through the desperate despair felt by Norio Shi Yamu, a second-generation victim of the atomic bomb dropped on Hiroshima? His family disseminated and his own health destroyed. Reading Ikida's guidance ignited the flame of hope in him and with the encouragement of the youth division members and a strong daily practice, he dedicated his life to making sure later generations never had to experience war, eventually becoming the Chair of the Hiroshima Youth Division Anti-War Publication Committee. A family experience. Okay, two more pages. A family experience. My own family were in the main part unreligious. My parental grandfather being a case in point. Paternal grandfather, sorry, being a case in point. His father, my great-grandfather, had been a Methodist preacher, but like many academic people of a generation in the nineteen twenties and thirties, he rejected Christianity, became a professor of economics. The grandpa, I knew, was a troubled man, however. By the time he was in his seventies and eighties, he would spend most of the morning in the bathroom due to a deep-seated terror of germs, illness and death, resulting in a prolonged bathroom routine which would last at least a couple of hours. Around eleven thirty AM, he would appear with a cherry, "Morning all." I'm sure modern psychotherapy would have helped him with that, his obsessive-compulsive disorder. But I also feel in ritualising the bathroom routine, he was in some way filling the gap that was left after the loss of religion. Death was his greatest enemy. imbued with a materialistic mindset, mindset of this being the only existence. And yet, when I visited him in hospital near to the moment of his death, all those worries and fears that had tormented him in life seemed to have vanished like clouds departed from the sky. Drifting in and out of consciousness, there was a deep serenity and calm to him, transcending what could be termed in Buddhism, the lesser self. There are many aspects of our modern society that can support people to lead fulfilled lives. Psychotherapy include, including cognitive behavioural therapy, social services, charitable organisations, community groups and clubs. The list is endless, but the comprehensive depth and breadth of religion to make a positive change, in my opinion, is still unrivalled. Waya! So. I, I remember when I first started practising Buddhism. First of all, telling that to my friends was one thing, oh, I'm a Buddhist now. You know, it's like, it's like, what, you're Buddhist? Like, didn't you used to like rob shops? Yeah, yeah, I did. I'm a Buddhist now. Like, I used to be a thief, you know, before I was a Buddhist. You wouldn't want me to work and you're in your, in your shop. I never stole from people, never, but I stole from establishments. I would, I would, I would teeth it clean. I'm talking about hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pounds a day. I did something called false cash refunds. So if someone bought something for me, cash, I would refund it instantly the second they walked out the shop and there was no CCTV and then the till was like up fifty pound. And so I had to take the money out, otherwise they'd be like, why is there fifty pound plus in the till? And the only person that was suffering was the company that lost the product, but they wouldn't know that until the audit the next year. And I would leave the job like the day before the audit. So I was very calculated. And actually, one of the things I will tell you now as well is, and I've learnt this myself because I did it, the way I could manipulate people so much is, because I would get them to trust me. And that's dangerous, right? Like, I'm being honest. Like, I would like, there was, I was working in one place, there was a whole lot of Muslim men there. So I would go to mosque with them on Friday. Can you imagine? I would go to mosque with them just so that if ever, ever anything happened, it'd be like, oh, no, it's not, it's not indie though, no way. I'd go, and I did care for them as people, but I'd never let them knew what I was doing, you know? Or I was working on Oxford Street once and, and I was a menswear manager in a shop. And there was, there was like Roster Ferry and Security Guard. We're talking about a big high street shop. And because they're rusters, I was like, like, they're my brothers, let me try and like, you know, catch a vibe with them. So what I would do is, I would talk to them, give them eye contact. The whole time I'm wearing a brand new pair of trainers, I've got like three tracksuits on and a jumper and a coat. And I would walk out the shop and like, it's only because they were rusters, they would, you know, we'd create a bond and I would like be like, yo, I love you, bro. And they'd be like, yeah, dread. Actually, I'm manipulating them because I, so this is kind of like a side thing, but just like, what I guess I'm saying here is that, don't, don't just trust people's words, trust their actions and like, trust your heart, man. Like, people can, people are incredible. You know, if I went back to that, I can manipulate, I can manipulate very easily, especially when you start going in. Women, be careful of spiritual men, god damn, god damn, yeah? Jesus, I'm telling you that now, yeah? Oh, like I see a princess in you and blah, blah, and like, oh, I had a dream, man, you was there. Yeah, right, yeah, that's very easy to manipulate people. So I just wanted to share that. But yeah, when I start, you know, I had a great transformation and I wouldn't even steal a Milky Way bar from a Londis now because I understand what karma is, you know, you know what I mean? I understand that also, that someone, somewhere paid for that, you know? And to hopefully give a Milky Way to a child in my local area, why would I steal that? You know, like, the only thing that I'm trying to work karma-wise is like, like killing mosquitoes. Like, man, if I see a little mosquito, bang, I kill that thing right away. Yeah, and I do Namuyohrengekyo straight afterwards, you know, I'm trying my best. So anyway, when, when I started joining a religion, you know, and I started actually turning up and you know, I've got S G I tattooed on my arm and stuff, it was quite intimidating at first to say to someone, oh, I'm part of a religion. And when I studied this book at the beginning of the year, I realised why I was intimidated. Because of my own Western understanding of what it meant to be part of a, you know, a religion and, you know? And I was, I was scared that people would perceive me as like being in a cult. You know, like what the hell? But I'll tell you now, and I've been saying this for the last few weeks, yeah? It is all about just being your absolute authentic self now. I don't care what no one thinks of me no more. I don't care at all what no one thinks of me anymore. If you think I'm in a cult because I'm a Buddhist, that is your perception. Can I actually share a book I want to suggest you all buy? Absolutely not Buddhist, it's actually from a Mexican friend of mine has bought it and I just come back from Manchester today and I read the whole book, the whole book, so it's a quick one. Some of you may know this, some of you may know, might not, but it's blowing me away, blowing me away. And it's so simple, totally Buddhist in my perspective, but so simple. And this is the book, it's called, I recommend it so much, Amazon, whatever you need to do, book deposit, whatever. It's called The Four Agreements, yeah, by Don Miguel. And it's about, it's a wisdom book about, so Toltec people are from like, I think Mexico, if I'm right. So it's, it's like, you know, they're just sharing their experiences. And I'll let you explain them now, the four agreements, yeah? And it's totally Buddhist to me. And if you do this, your life will change and it's all things we know, hundred percent know, but how, how are we really embodying it? And I've been embodying it literally for the last four hours and already I'm seeing shifts in my life, four hours. So the first, there's four rules basically, and this book just talks about that. And the first one is be impeccable with your words. Be impeccable with your words. Like, don't just say things for saying things, understand that your vibration and your words are so profound. So speak with integrity, say only what you mean, say only what you mean. And I can say, sometimes I talk a lot and I realise actually I didn't really mean what I said, but once it's done, it's been out there, it's travelling in the cosmos. So speak with integrity, say only what you mean. And someone who really makes me think of that is Jordan Peterson. I don't know what you think of him, you know, but I love Jordan Peterson. I think he's very brave for standing up against a lot of the things he has to stand up for. But like, a lot of people misquote him and like, you know, a lot of women have arguments with him on, in these interviews and he, and he always says, yo, 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 let's go back. I'm very, I'm very, very cautious with the words I choose and I did not say what you just said I said. I said it maybe almost exactly the same, but that one, two words that you added changed the whole vibration of the message. And I really got that from Jordan Peterson, you know, really like, be like, I'm very specific, specific with the words I use. Because also people are perceiving you through their view of, and their perspective. So if, if anything, if we really want to communicate our heart, we have to almost go above and beyond to make sure we're really communicating our heart. So yeah, first rule, be impeccable with your words. Speak with integrity, say only what you mean, avoid using the words to speak against yourself or to gossip about others. Now gossip is a hard one, yeah? What is gossip? Gossip is not needed, yeah? Don't gossip. Use the power of words in the direction of truth and love. If you're gonna, if you're gonna speak, let it come with truth and love from your heart, yeah? That's number one. Number two, chapter two, don't take anything personally. This one blew me away when I really, and I hope you do purchase and read it in your own time, quick. It really embodies, don't take things personally, yeah? I don't know, a good example, man, like. Um, I don't know, a good example, man, like, uh, you know, I've got a bit of a complexion where I'm like, man, I feel like, I'm so skinny, man. I don't want to be this skinny. And it's actually not just because when I was young, everyone was like, he's so skinny, man, he's so skinny. But all them people now are fat, yeah, and they never travelled around the world because of skinny legs, you know. And so anyway, so do you know what I mean? So it's like, uh, I should never have took that personally because actually it was all part of my path and I love who I am. I love my legs. I catch myself walking down Oxford Street like, I need to go to gym, but you know, like, I'm trying. So, um, yeah, don't just, don't take anything personally and also it'll explain why. Uh, nothing others do is because of you. Nothing others do is because of you. What others say and do is a projection of their own reality, their own dream. When you are immune to the opinions and actions of others, you won't be a victim of needless suffering. So don't take nothing personally. Third, this is a big one, big one, yeah, because I swear to God, I've got brothers and sisters, people that I love and I assume, I assume that they would act in a certain way to get my back, to protect me, to love me. So number, rule number three, don't make assumptions, big one. Do not make assumptions. Find the courage to ask questions and to express what you really want. Communicate with others as clearly as you can to avoid misunderstanding, sadness and drama. With just this one agreement, you can completely transform your life. Like, don't assume things. Like, let's, for instance, a quick example, got four more minutes. I was, I was attacked online by someone recently, um, saying, you can't trust this guy. He's sleeping around, he only sleeps with loads of spiritual women. And I was basically celibate at the time, so it was an absolute insult, yeah. And, um, there were people that I knew that were going to this person to have sessions, spiritual sessions. And I was like, yo, you're my sister. Like, you can't go to her no more. Like, in my head, I was like, you're my sis, man. Like, that person that you call your leader has just ripped me apart online because she had a dream. And, um, so I'm like, you got, I assume that you would protect me. I assume that you would stop seeing her and these people didn't, some of them didn't do this. And I spoke to them since. But that's because I assumed that they would do this for me. So that's just a small example. Don't assume from, because that way I won't be, if I didn't assume that they would do that, I wouldn't, I know that I would still be talking to them, I wouldn't be that bothered. But I assumed that you love me the way that I would do it, but I can't perceive how they would react if they were in the situation, you know what I mean? So don't assume nothing. These are really simple, but like, I swear to God, like, if you live by these three little things, of course, with all the things we're learning, it really helps. And the last one, always do your best. Your best is going to change from moment to moment. It will be different when you are healthy as opposed to sick. Under any circumstances, simply do your best and you will avoid self-judgment, self-abuse and regret. And just do your best, man, the best that you can. Like, I know I'm trying my best. I know I could, I could easily, I could have done more today. I could have done a three-hour study session, but that's not my best. My best is making sure that I'm just trying my hardest. And also, at the end of the day, you can't cost yourself, you can't slander yourself if you know you've tried the best for yourself, you know what I mean? Assume, make an ass out of you and me. Yes, yeah, wow, yeah. So yeah, no assumptions, man. So anyway, anyway, the most important thing I think that we can do moving forward this week is just be as happy as we can always, step into your authentic self, make sure you're having the awkward. Let me, if I can say anything, if there's an awkward conversation, whether it's with a partner, someone you're seeing, your mum, your, your boss, whatever. When you feel that awkwardness there, like, oh, I don't know like what she's gonna, listen, just do it. Because I've been doing it with people recently and actually I've become ten times closer to them. Even if like, we've had to change the relationship, change the dynamic, we can't see each other in a certain way anymore. Let's become even closer now because actually we've transformed the real reason why we've come into each other's lives. You know what I mean? So, um, I love you, man. Don't assume nothing. Try your best always. Um, and yeah, hopefully we'll have about four more sessions and then we're done. And then, and then a big party at my house when we're finished, yeah. Okay, cool. I love you. Let's chant three times and, uh, yeah, I'm gonna leave. I've got a call right now. Like I said, if anyone wants to just join, see what an SGI meeting is like, just like, just log in and just like, just mute it and just be there. Um, yeah, all right, I love you. Okay, man. I love you so much, man. Just thank you for being my family. That you know that we chose to do this, we must, we must, we must have been doing this for more lifetimes than grains of sand. That in this critical year, as we move from Pisces to Aquarius, when the world crumbles, we rise. I want you to, all of you, because you're my reflection, the more you see Babylon fall, the more evil we see, the more darkness we see, the higher we rise. Hundred percent, that is our path, that is our journey, that is our good karma. The worse you see life get, the better we are going to become. Hundred percent, it's happening literally day by day for me. My life is going like this. But society is going like this. I ain't got nothing to lose. I'm a spiritual being, I'm a nomad. So but like, if you're invested in this 3D society, you're a banker and you've got this house here and shit, you're losing your tits right now, you know what I mean? But I would like, so yeah, I love you. I need to get on to my next meeting. Nam Myo Horenge Kyo. Stay happy, woke, grounded, whatever it is. I love you. Next week. See ya.